So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Lori, could you do real call, please?
Adrian.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
Sean. Allison.
Here.
Nick.
Here.
Kara.
Here.
Gabe.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sub moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? The agenda is approved. Do we have anybody here in person for public forum? No, nothing online?
Nothing online.
Great, we'll move right into our reports. Up first is the building projects update report, which Mr. Davidson is, maybe just kind of do an overview and then answer our questions. Maury is on vacation, so there's a really good update there. I will say the linked document is a little easier to read through. Assembly like spaces stuff here.
Yeah, I mean, it was a bit of a how they get that put in there.
Maury was confident, it was self-explanatory, but if you have questions, you can definitely dive into that.
Good overall, it looks like Knutson's resolving the damages, the baseball and field maintenance repair. East Ridge is completely done. Anybody questions?
Since we're working with Knutson, so more updates to come. That's what I'm saying.
Yes. He is comfortable with everything he has on there. Comfortable with the direction we're moving, so.
Looks good. Great, we'll move over to superintendent report, which welcome to this first official board meeting. We're so glad to have you here.
Glad to be here, for sure. As noted in the summary, I had the majority of the 101s. It's been an awesome first 13 days. Conversation took to this point, it went really well. I'm excited about the people I'm going to work with every day, including you guys. Starting the process of, I've got a couple names, but if you have other names, I've got a couple emails on some potential community members that would be good to reach out to. Just need name and email or contact information, it would be awesome. We've started the process, we meet, I'm meeting with a few of our directors tomorrow to start our strategic planning, just working on updating. What we have on the website is not necessarily updated or accurate, I think, moving forward, and that's really important. We have the updates and what we have on our website is super crucial, so everyone has transparency about what our plans are. So building the long term and short term. Of course, you guys will have some say in that and be able to get eyes on as soon as we have it tentative and ready to bring to you. Also in the process of building our district goals for the 25, 26 school year, so our building principals have clarity so they can build their building goals. So yeah.
Great.
Questions?
Thank you. And then we'll head into finance, of course. Lori.
So just a couple things, again, they're all listed in there. Highlights would be the school board election that will be held now again in November. We have three, four terms, I'm sorry, that will be on the ballot. District two, three, four, and one at large position. District three will be a two-year term to complete the official term of that particular, when the vacancy was created. So that one will be, again, different. The other ones will all be four-year terms. The candidate filing timeline will be August 25th, so you can take papers at any time. It will require 50 signatures, as it has been the same in the past. And the forms are available in a number of places. You can get them on the Secretary of State website, CCA website, and also here, we would have copies at the district administration office. So it is the season. Property tax update for fiscal year '25, I have those listed on there. So as you can see, our rate after certification and everything. Finalization from the Department of Management is six cents less than it was for fiscal year '25. And then the second number would be for the Amana, the Amana district, for the extra 20 cents for the library. And then on the key measures report that I got added rather lately, this is again, not a final version by any means. We have a number of revenues and expenditures yet that will come into the district. I just wanted to give you, this is what we know at this point in time. So the UAB can change, the total expenditures will change, our total revenues will change, but again, kind of just a checkpoint, I guess, at this point in the year to see where we are. So to review that and have questions.
When do we anticipate that, like, that UAB is not good? When do we anticipate, like, we'll know that final and if we're going to the special committee?
September 15th, after we finalize the license CAR, yeah. Again, there'll be, probably the biggest impact that we don't have at this point in time will be what our total special ed expenditures are, which where we have all of our tuition and billings to pay yet, also coming in as revenue, so that's, you know, kind of back and forth. But the special ed expenditures, when we know that total, can affect our UAB because we get spending authority back for our special ed deficit. So that's why that, there's lots of little wiggle word in there, yeah.
Probably, I don't need to be super nervous, yeah.
Not yet, no, not yet. Great.
Okay.
Okay? I'm nervous, yes. But this is a very, very preliminary snapshot in time.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Okay, we'll move into board report. I have a, let's start with policy committee. If you want to talk about Jennifer, what we did in policy, and I have a few other little things.
If you guys want to open your notes to more meeting minutes for the agenda for the policy, all of the notes are in there. Some highlights that we need to discuss is under B 40203, abusive students by school district employees, there is going to be a Zoom, not a Skype meeting tomorrow.
It's good clarification.
For clarification from the DOE and the HHS, and we're going to get more instruction on that for that. So that policy may be affected by that webinar tomorrow. We'll have to add that to the handbook also at a later date. Let's see, the compulsory attendance, we're going to have to determine what messaging. There's some exceptions that were added last year. Remember, we went through that attendance policy and all the parents were really confused. They've added some additional things for funerals, weddings, which are excused absences, so we'll have to communicate that as well. And they're also going to kind of update the secretaries and their training on August 7th to communicate that to parents and how they're going to code all those additional exceptions. If you'll notice in the graduation requirement, policy has changed. They'll have to pass a civics test now to graduate. We as a district will have the autonomy to determine and to facilitate that as we wish. Currently, right now, there is no, we have to turn in the test or report the test results to the state in order for the kids to graduate.
And that starts next July, so it's not for this school year. Starts July 1st of 2026.
And then adding down the line here, we are going to decide to possibly just table 50308 and 50308 reg, as those are the discipline matrix that the principals are currently working on. So we're going to give them a little bit more time to update. Some of the principals have gone into the document and started to make some changes. They're not completely ready yet, so we're going to vote to recommend that we table those two policies tonight to give those principals the remainder of the time to update that behavioral matrix. Under new policies, there's a school safety assessment team. Paulson is going to oversee this, we've already had that in place. The team typically only met in September. Now we're looking to do a fall and a spring meeting for that. And that'll be a first reading of that policy. And then under rescind policies, you'll notice that we rescinded all the Title IX policies because of the changes in the Civil Rights Code for the state of Iowa. So we decided possibly not rescinding those because if there was an incident between the time we rescind them and then we load them in, there could be a gray area in there that we could be in a violation of. So the guidance is to go back to the 2020 Title IX guidance that was given, was that federally or from the state? It's federally, right?
Yep.
We were supposed to do an update on 2024, which we didn't really adapt yet, so we're instructed to go back to the 2020 guidance for the Title IX.
This will cover us, just in case we get to, what we talked about in the policy committee is, I was thinking about the first day with kids, so it's not last week in August, but with football, cross-country volleyball starting, it's pretty advantageous for us to have a policy we can work off of in case something would come up, specific to Title IX or any bullying harassment, those type of things. So that will cover us.
That's it for policy. The only other thing I'd add in, just to call attention to, for the cell phone policy from the state, ours was comprehensive enough to be what they had, so we don't need to change anything with our policy. And we kind of felt that with the AI as well. That was covered in the anti-voluntee, so there was not an AI addition we could have added.
We still updating some of the policies to add the designate.
I think there was a couple in there that just slashed designate.
Whenever they come up, we just do it then.
The AI one has designated wholly.
Oh, did?
Yeah, it does have the designate.
Because it was under review, not under revision.
Yeah, it wasn't under revision, so it was.
Other questions on policy? Okay, a couple other things that I had were, you already covered election, so I just wanted to make sure you had the, everyone's aware of the election paperwork.
There's packets on the table.
There's packets over there, if you can take anywhere out. A reminder about the cybersecurity training that I have not yet done, but I will do, Kale. It's due in Oc, did I say it's due in October?
Yes.
You should not tell me that much time.
It's the same timeline as the HTRK.
Yeah, but it is due before the election, so everyone at this table has to do it.
Sense the excitement, right?
Yeah. And then Pepple Committee. So with the, we got some dates from Tandy about when we want things to go to Pepple Committee and to give us a heads up when we'd be needing to approve stuff in here for the high school, middle school addition. So we'll be populating that out. However, I think that we would like to have a Pepple Committee meeting in August, so we'll need to find a time. For Pepple Committee members, it could be lunch, not before the August board meeting, because that's policy. It could be a lunch hour, it could be a separate time we come here, or an evening on Zoom. But we want to make sure we're getting that timeline finalized, making sure we know what all we want from Shive Hattery ahead of time. Also talking about the other projects that are looming. So Sean, yeah, your email that I, when I emailed you about Pepple stuff and the vote, like, looking at a Pepple tax and do we need, when do we need to think about that? Because these are our current projects, but we know there are other projects that will come up all of a sudden. And so budgets and that sort of thing. So Pepple Committee members.
Because if we did voter Pepple, we would want to throw that on the November election?
Yeah.
If that was where we were going?
Yes, because otherwise you have to pay for the election separately. You can do it other days, but then you have to pay more.
Is that the same deadline as candidate filing to have that?
Yeah, which is why we want to make sure we meet early August, so if we need to do it and make a campaign for it, we have some time.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring it up here, because it's not really, we didn't meet as a committee, but it's been coming up, and I just feel like the Pepple Committee needs to get together. So we can either throw out dates right now or I can do, we can do emails. Oops, early August. One second. Preference realized.
You can do a doodle, doodle poll.
A doodle poll?
Yeah.
Is that what, okay, yeah. Okay, I can send out a poll.
That's a name for it, right?
Yes. I just heard like, and I was like, what?
Sorry.
No, you're okay. Okay, so I will get. Well, it might not be, I guess it might be Lori or somebody helping me do a poll, but we will get a poll out by, you know, the end of this week, so we can get something on the books. I think we can plan, unless you guys really want to come in person, we can plan on virtual, so that we have more options available for time.
Sounds good.
Okay. That's all I had for board report. Did anybody else have anything? Did anyone go to anything, like a foundation meeting?
Foundation is next week, next week. And my library board, no meeting in July.
Oh, I did go to a library board meeting in Amana, that's true. Which was, they appointed a new librarian who's very active. But they're thinking about switching from being affiliated with the Maringo Library to like a different one, because the money, like, since we're not an incorporated town, the money doesn't come directly to the library. You have to have a library that gets the money and then shuffles it over to you. And I guess Maringo hasn't been wanting to shuffle the money over. They like hold it. And now they want to charge Amana more money. So I don't know, anyways. I don't know if that eventually will have to come through us for any reason. They were asking me, and I was like, I don't know, Lori will know.
We did it one time to change from them, and then, in long story. Anyway, yeah, there'll probably be something to come to you if they decide to go that route, it'll be in agreement.
Does it have to do with them same county? It's supposed to be a library within Iowa County?
Yes, unfortunately, because I was like, can we just switch it in?
Or like Oxford?
Yeah, but it has to be within the same county, so they're looking into the options for that. Williamsburg has been much more friendly overall, it sounds like, so. Anyways, what's that library update?
Governed by the Board of Supervisors, I think. I think it's governed by the Board of Supervisors, so that's why it has to go by county.
Yeah.
Specific to the foundation, I'm planning when I visit with Mike to attend those monthly meetings as well. I just, I want to stay connected to that, I think it would, and I don't want to take, I can take something off script plate. Everybody's welcome to go, but I'm planning on going as well.
That'd be great. Anything for anybody else out on board report? All right, well, let's flip over to our action items then. Item A is to appoint Board Secretary Treasurer for the 25, 26 term and note of office. So the recommendation is appoint Lori Robertson as Board Secretary Treasurer for 25, 26.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion here? We are doing, we don't always do it this time of year, but it makes sense because it aligns with her contract, so that's why we're doing it now. Okay, do we need to vote on it and then I do this?
Oh, yeah, you should.
I was like, you're ready to go, but I think we need to vote, okay. So it's okay, motion carries, let's do that over now.
I was like, is that part of the session? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, with the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary Treasurer and clear the Commanic Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you.
Here is the next.
Okay, this is on the record, packed out there. Okay, item B is to select 2026 legislative priorities. So the recommendation would be to submit the legislative priorities as discussed, which we will do. Can I get a motion?
Sub moved.
Okay, so questions and discussion. I did ask Mr. Davidson to look through and suggest from his point of view, which three or four priorities would probably be best for our district's benefits. Have you got a little preview of what your thoughts are?
So if, my recommendation would be the first three. I think the first one, we believe that literacy is the building block for student achievement and student success. It does make schools, I mean, sense for schools. If literacy has a focus, that one I would highly encourage. Number two, we believe that a high-quality teacher workforce is necessary for student achievement. Of course, our focus right now has to not only be on recruiting when we have a need, but hiring. And then, most important, I would, I would say, is the retention of those staff. Those are important today. And then number three, we believe that expanded opportunities through public schools will provide students first and engaging educational experiences. Taking a look at what we have and be able to maximize the offerings we have to kids. In this particular case, taking a hard look at not only CTE, but programs like, you know, an alternative education route to virtual academies, those type of things. It's important we can take a look at those to see what we could offer, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Our members, did anybody have others that they felt passionately about? We can submit for, we can switch.
Where do we, do they send out like an email that we do a survey? Or where do we?
I submit line.
Oh, okay.
The ones that you sent out.
Sounds good, I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
And then we found out at IASB conference what they, what the whole association is going with.
That's how they develop their platform for the delegate assembly.
And I thought all eight of them were pretty worthy. For me, I have six, seven, and eight. But I, I can go along with Aaron's recommendation as well, too. They, they all mean something to our district and to our district somehow.
I'm good with your recommendation.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion carries. So action item C is to approve the CARE SOLIS agreement. Recommendation is to approve the CARE SOLIS agreement as pilot program with Grantwood AEA for mental health services.
Motion.
Second.
There's a great S part in there.
My first one.
Oh, I was gonna say, who did that? Good job!
Hopefully I passed the test.
Amazing.
Lori gave me some training on that. It was a new term for me, so.
This is great, I really appreciate it right away, knowing it's free, but also knowing it could be a future cost. Like, I, I feel like that's one of those things that, like, next year, I'd be like slapped, like, what do you mean?
So then we could decide, did we like this or not? And do we want to pay for it?
Yeah.
Is it $2 per, like, student in the district?
Yes. And so that, it would have to be, I'll just, it's gonna have to be us. Really, we'd have to have a lot of data to be able to bring to you a recommendation to move forward with that the following year. But as it's free and Grantwood is really promoting it, it would seem silly to miss the boat on it when we have an opportunity to serve our kids differently for the upcoming school year.
It looks like it's like a virtual or like.
It is, yep, it is, so each, I haven't, so Angelica is the point person of the district, but from what I, it's very similar to a bunch of different platforms out there where kids have the ability within school and outside of school hours to be able to get services specific to mental health, which is always going to be advantageous if kids need that extra line of support. And it would not take a staff member in our district, it's not going to take their time, it's sites monitoring the space where they're having that scheduled time during the school day. If it happens at home, then that falls into, there's guidelines that they come up with to support parents. Parents have to be available and around, and students have the, if they have services at home, virtually, but.
Other questions?
So is it, is this, I would say, replacing the service that we already provide?
It is not, it's in addition to.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion carries. Okay, action item D is to approve the amendment to professional services agreement for the middle school and high school additions with Shive Hattery. Recommendation is to approve the amendment for professional services for change in scope of the middle school and high school addition projects. Motion.
Sub moved.
Second.
Questions and discussions here. Lori did attach some documents to help myself understand the changes in scope. I've talked to some with different people about it, too. Paragraph two in there, it sounds like it's a lot related to inflation, is why the overall price change. It's why the overall price changed, then now the percent, because the house percentage calculated, that means the fees go up for us. Any questions here? You're shaking your head back and forth, I don't know what's happening here.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, approve payout number thirteen to Knuts in Construction Baseball Softball Complex Phase One. The recommendation is approve payout number thirteen, the baseball softball complex to Knuts in Construction in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
Submoved.
Questions or discussion here?
He said he had a pretty lengthy punch list of what this is gonna go with, and did we have any updates on the punch list? I know in the grounds report, it said that they were gonna fix the netting and but I also remember him saying he's got a pretty lengthy punch list, other than that stuff that we brought up.
I've been on some emails uh since I've started the past couple weeks. And uh everything Lori is asking for been fixed or has been fixed. Be as comfortable with where we're at.
Like what's the, you know, like, what's, you know, does it respect, to me like the seating's not like eighty percent. You know, you look, you do all seating around the fences and in the middle. It's not eighty percent. I don't know where it's at, but says it needs to be for final acceptance, but I mean, it's not.
You're talking about the grain stands for the baseball?
Just anywhere but the fields. Any seating that's outside of the infield.
Seating, grass.
Seating, grass seating. There's no way it's established and it's eighty percent, but.
Let me look at that.
And Lori keeps saying that the grounds field will take care of it, take care of it, now they're paying us to take care of the infield of the practice field, but.
And they're working with them to reimburse us for that.
There's eighteen thousand dollars, we're holding back on that, so are we gonna take all that eighteen thousand dollars from them to pay for our own services, you know, that, the write-up has said that they're working on them reimbursing us, but what's the dollar amount, like?
And it says it's working with them, they haven't committed to it yet, that's my only hesitation. Because the last meeting, he did pay up for like a certain amount of money, he said, go ahead and pass this payout, but I do have a punch list for the next payout. But we never got an update on that punch list.
Which I think they're holding out of, you know, they're holding eighteen thousand dollars back. Which I assume is for seating. The irrigation system is.
And then they're reimbursing.
Another eight thousand dollars are holding back, but is that money that they're gonna, second, they got a deductive change order for the stuff that we've done?
And then we fixed the irrigation issue and resotted that infield on our own time dime and our work. They were supposed to reimburse us for that, but it sounds like, based on his report, that they're working to make them reimburse us, and just a little bit of clarity on.
And I assume that's why they're holding thirty thousand dollars back to pay for that stuff for, to negotiate with for the next payout, like this isn't the last payout.
He did say that to approve that last payout that we did in the work session. And then he said there's a lengthy punch list, so we still, but we haven't got updates on that, unless you guys have gotten one.
I can get more information.
Yeah, they're not holding any money, any money back on concrete, and there's still some crack concrete in places.
Yeah.
But them not being here is tough.
I can, I can get some information from Mertle next week, though.
So can we table this, or should we not table this, or how? I just hate to pay them money when there's potential, I don't know.
We have thirty days to pay them from the date of the, by the contract. What's the date on here?
What's the date on that, yeah?
Seven-ten.
Yeah, seventeen. But we can hold the check, just not mail it until those things have been resolved, if you'd like to show them.
When is, yeah, we can ask for it, we can get it back.
August tenth, can we just table this?
We have another meeting before August, before that, thirty days ago.
We don't, we can do a special meeting before the
The work session, right?
We don't have a lot of
The pebble.
Could we approve pending the
Yeah, I'm okay, we still have thirty-eight thousand dollars, we still have money.
And then not mail the check until you follow up and then
Give an update.
And then peck, based on that update, we'll save the next payout for the last three thousand.
Yeah, they'll also have one more payout that we can, there's still a lot of things that can be fixed.
Yeah, and just to get clarity on like, when they fixed the irrigation issue, we actually fixed it, resotted it with our staff, our crew.
And
And they were supposed to reimburse us for that.
And then just, and we get the number two, there is a difference between retained and warranty, we sell the year warranty. So some breaks after we accept it and they have, you know, you still have to fix it within a year if it's a warranty issue.
But he also indicated that they were hard to get ahold of and it was gonna take longer for them to come back and
But you can't hold your money though.
No, I know, but I'm saying like, if we're the ones fixing those warranty issues,
Yeah.
we've got to establish what we're, what's going on.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we still have thirty-eight thousand dollars for Lori to negotiate and see what that deductive change order is of payout, because Lori says that they're gonna pay us money of some sort, we just don't know what.
We'll get some clarity, I'll get it out.
Go ahead, prove this tonight. Get clarity from Lori and make sure we have that all resolved. Before we get the final, before we hand the check, and then also final payout, we want to make sure we know what they're covering and paying for.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six master agreement for permanent enrollment partnership with Kirkwood Regional Center. The recommendation is to approve this master agreement with Kirkwood Regional Center. Motion.
Second.
Questions or discussion here? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Workplace Learning Connection M O U. Recommendation is to approve this uh Workplace Learning Connection M O U for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Motion.
Questions or discussion here? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item A, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six E L L Consultant Agreement with Grantwood A E A. Recommendation is to approve this agreement for E L L Consultant Services from Grantwood A E A.
Submoved.
Question or discussion is here?
I do have a question. I was confused and had sent a previous email to Erin and Lori about how this, since we, last month, we approved ninety percent was being passed all the way through. So this is coming out of the ten percent portion, is that right? And Lori had sent me some numbers, and so out of the ten percent portion, it's about a hundred thousand. And so then this will start funneling out of that hundred thousand. Okay.
Is there a cap on that? So when it gets to that point, how do we handle that, or we?
If we go into the ninety percent, we spend more than the hundred thousand, is that your question, then that will just come out of regular general fund dollars?
Okay. I did have a question, Lori sent me an email with some of the numbers, it's like the ten percent portion is a hundred thousand, the ninety percent portion that we are paying to the A E A is nine hundred sixteen thousand. You then had a media services funding paid to district, what is that?
That is, uh, we also did receive the media and the, let's see, I have one, I have one.
Educational.
Educational, those are ones that we did receive this year as well, that sixty-fourty split. So media services, we used to pay like, um, oh, I may need some help here, um copies of certain types of, is that what Grantwood?
A E A comes out, you probably know better than I do.
Yeah, that's probably the majority would be copies, bigger jobs that teachers would have sent there rather than printing at their own building, um, maybe renting certain books, different things like that.
So when you say media services funding paid to district, that's paid from the state to the district, and then we flow
Zero.
Zero through, we keep all of that.
Yep.
Okay.
And we did that this year, too, at the sixty-fourty split, but this year we keep it all.
Okay, so then we can decide.
Yep.
Okay, I was just getting really confused with all those pots of money and what is flowing through.
I understand, it is confusing.
The next three, it says about twenty thousand dollars each, right?
So that's coming out of the ten percent portion.
And where does the media come, the media come out of?
That is money we get to keep to pay for some of those other kinds of services.
Not out of ten percent.
Correct.
Additional.
Yes, these three contracts are the only thing that'll come out of that ten percent. And then our special ed services and all those things that we contract, that will come out of that ninety, yeah?
I just forwarded the email that Lori had sent me that you can see those numbers.
So all of them will come to us and stay aid, just like our regular state aid, and then we'll transfer that ninety percent. And the rest of it will, will stay.
Same page. I'm determined already forwarded, you got two emails, sorry.
So for that, the something to pay directly to district, we could choose, right, to pay A E A for some sort of printing services, but we could also choose to use it elsewhere. So education services now, if we want to read a consultant not from A E A, we could use that pot somehow. Okay.
Okay, this was super helpful, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. You're, you understand it as well as I do. It is confusing.
Other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Early Ed Consultant Agreement with Grantwood A E A, and the recommendation is to approve this agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Questions or discussion here? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just one more thing, if I can interject, all three of those contracts, we are, are just for one year. And so we can look at them throughout the year, we may not decide we don't need those type of services and we can change that for next year, so we do have some flexibility there as far as what services we get to choose.
Okay, thank you. Item J is sent through the twenty-five, twenty-six School Improvement Cons- Consultant, can't speak, Agreement with Grantwood A E A. Recommendation is to approve the agreement for school improvement consultant services from Grantwood A E A.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Great, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item K, approve purchase of twenty-five Horizon Three Node Zero. Recommendation is to approve the purchase of twenty-two, twenty-five Horizon Three Node Zero subscription used for continued improvement of district technology security. Want a question?
Question. Second.
Questions or discussion here? Kayla is available, so. Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. For our side, we're getting into the handbook, and there will be modifications later on handbooks based on policies later, so the, we'll be approving kind of the handbook, knowing that pending amendments based on policy for all these handbooks. As I'm gonna say it five or six times. Okay, so item L is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Elementary Handbook. Recommendation is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Elementary Handbook with the highlighted revisions and amendments based on policy revisions.
Submoved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item M is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Middle School Handbook. Recommendation is to approve the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six Middle School Handbook with the highlighted revisions and amendments from policy revisions.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, questions or discussion about this one? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item N is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six High School Handbook. Recommendation is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six High School Handbook with the highlighted revisions and amendments and policy.
Motion. Second.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item O is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Preschool Handbook. Recommendation is to approve twenty-five, twenty-six Preschool Handbook with the highlighted revisions and amendments from policy revisions. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item P is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Athlete Parent Handbook. Recommendation is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Athlete Parent Handbook with highlighted revisions and any revisions from policy changes.
Motion.
Questions or discussion here?
I have a question about the, um, it's not a highlighted area, but we've had a lot of people ask about the senior passes. They were told at the gates this summer that we don't have a senior pass, but it's in our handbook, can we clarify that we do have a senior pass? How they get it, do we ever market that, and why people know?
Do we, do we, yeah, I was at a couple softball games, can you, why can't they just show an ID or, I don't know?
Yeah.
Is it a senior?
They were told that they don't, we don't offer one, but it's in our handbook, so we need to figure out, do we have one or not?
Sixteen year citizen?
Says sixty-five and upper eligible to receive a free senior pass that don't expire.
I, I will check with Kurt.
But they were told at the gate in the summer that we don't do that.
Come on, Mr. Daniels.
We, we do have one. They get them from Mary Lou, I don't know if that's the most efficient place to do that, but we did. A couple came in uh sometime before the summer and she has a little box full of senior passes and we did, and they did get one, now how we marketed it, yeah.
So maybe it was misinformation from someone at the gate, didn't have.
They're all volunteers at the gate, so.
I feel like it should come through central.
I know that they, they do keep a, a plastic sheet full of cards in there, now whether that one's in there or not, I don't know, but I do think we can do a better job of certainly promoting how people can get them and make that an easier process.
Make sure people at the gate understand that we're accepting them.
So wherever we list the adult passes, can we just put that as an option whenever we, it is like that on the website, but we just need to get in front of it and all?
We can certainly put something out through the high school that says senior sitting passes are available at the high school.
It should be middle school, high school technically, right?
And it's for any seniors, it's not just like in district? Is it resident seniors or like?
Yeah, they have to show proof of an address.
And they have to come to the high school to get the pass.
They have to come to the high school to get it, but they do have to show proof of residency.
I think it's a matter of training.
It doesn't say like high school versus middle school events, it just says you have to go to the high school office.
Is it a WAMAC related thing, or no?
I thought it used to be, because I have seen a WAMAC senior pass from people.
Yeah, cause it says admission prices are set by the WAMAC camp, conference, and so I don't know if that's
Middle school.
Middle school's crandic then, is that why? So that might be part, but also, yeah, I think we should align, and I also wonder, like, what is this, if today a senior citizen want one, wants one, can they come to the high school and get it? Or should it be through central office somehow where we're year round?
It says here, high school.
It says high school office, but Mary Lou is kind of a little bit.
Yeah, Mary Lou, so I would have to contact her, she keeps them in her office in her drawer, so probably making it accessible through the summer. You know, not that anything is going on now, she, she worked for a majority of the sports season, but if somebody were to come in, let's say tomorrow, I would have to probably say, hey, well, I'll take it, we'll get it, we'll get it figured out, but then they would have to come back, so I think we can do a better job of figuring out that process, I can work with Kurt on that.
We can mail it to them.
Yeah.
Take a list of names, there just is proof of residency and over sixty-five.
Be an easy fix.
Yeah, I don't think anything, handbook needs to change, just, we just need a fix. Yeah, no, that was great. Yep, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Next up.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item Q is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Coach Sponsor Handbook. Recommendation is to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Coach Sponsor Handbook with higher revisions and amendments for policy revision.
Motion.
Questions or discussion here? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, so item R is to accept donation from the C C A Booster Club for dumbbell equipment. Recommendation is that we accept the fourteen thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-six cent donation from the Booster Club for dumbbell equipment.
Motion. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Booster Club. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On item S, the Board Policy First On item S, we have a board policy first reading. So this is to approve the first reading of board policy five oh three ten, school safety assessment team.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion here? Jennifer talked earlier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item T is to approve board policy revisions and review. Um, so the recommendation is to approve the revisions review as discussed by the board and policy committee. I'm gonna read these aloud, they're, we are not, um, going to include five oh three oh eight discipline of students who make threats of violence or cause incidents of violence or the accompanying regulation in this tonight. So the ones that we are voting to approve are one oh four anti bullying harassment, two eleven open meetings, four oh two oh three abusive students by school district employees, four oh five oh two licensed employee qualifications recruitment selection, four eleven oh two classified employee qualifications recruitment selection, five oh one oh three compulsory attendance, five oh one oh nine chronic absenteeism and truancy, five oh three oh nine student use of personal electronic devices, five oh three oh nine R one regulation for student use of personal electronic devices, five oh five oh five graduation requirements, five oh seven oh one student health and immunization certificates, six oh three oh one basic instruction program, six oh three oh five health education and six oh five oh eight artificial intelligence and the education environment.
Motion.
Second.
Anyone have questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, can I get a motion to table item U, approve the recent policies?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any questions about that? I thought earlier that we're gonna wait? Okay, great, all those in favor of motion, of table it?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, you did it. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, um, item B is to approve the consent items. Recommendation is to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion here? Thank you for the gifts as always. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, on to our discussion items. Um, got a couple things. Um, the next meeting, so Pepple will schedule our next meeting, policy and full board is August twentieth. At that meeting, please, just how you would like to be seen in a board picture, we will have our board picture with Mr. Davidson um, that evening, so we can update the website and the Christmas cards we send from the board every year. No, definitely not, but we could make it one, um. So put a note into yourself about that. We are talking about doing a grounds, district wide kind of grounds tour, we get in a, we talk about a bus. I thought that air conditioned vans were a good option as well for those who would want to join the, um, sometime in early August. Mr. Davidson thought it would be helpful to go around with Maury. I thought it'd be helpful to go around, especially with some of the construction, even in Tiffin, just how are the roads changing and impacting our district. Um, so for that, again, I think that'd probably be best to get a date that works for most people via some sort of email doodle poll. But I want, it'd be early August before the school year starts. So lock, watch out for that. And then, um, last thing I wanted to bring up is Grundmeyer Leadership Services does, um, a, especially for first year superintendents. They offer a service to help with the superintendent evaluation. It's six hundred dollars. Um, it uses a three sixty eval approach. It, he follows the I S L standards, it's essentially what I A S B recommends, but also incorporates three sixty evaluation. And then I think it would be Trent or Shannon working with us to put together a report, very similar to what we just went through with research. Um, I felt very interested in getting some guidance, especially knowing the election's coming up, we might have really fresh members on here. Um, that they could help us all understand and kind of recalibrate how the superintendent evaluation should look to build it for moving forward years. Um, they wouldn't engage with us until it looks like February or so, probably or January, I think, on that. So I would just want to put out there, my plan was to maybe tell them we are interested. We'd have to come before, we have to talk about it some more, but does that sound good to people overall?
And I think they will provide, um, I mean, we don't have to make a decision tonight, this is just discussion. They'll, they'll provide a sample review of what they've done on other districts, where you can kind of read and see what it entails.
I can forward what we have. Mr. Davidson actually is the one who talked to them about it at the onboarding and then forwarded me some information, but I want, we wanted to bring it up here before like spamming you with this option.
I, I asked about it simply because, um, first your superintendent, I can, I think I could lead my, the evaluation process with the board, but to make it so you were comfortable, um, and it was the best pro, you know, best process possible for not only the board, but for me, to make sure you guys had the factual information. I think it's, the process as is stated, I think it's something that would be easily be able to duplicate it. Um, I love feedback and I, I want you guys to have a great experience with, with my evaluation itself, hold me accountable like I should be. I think this would be the best way to establish what best practice would be, and then we could just duplicate it in years moving forward.
Yeah, I'm very interested.
Yeah, fine. I'll use it.
I am down over there.
Wow, showing cards.
Is that, I'll find it.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I agree, I think, okay, so we'll get some information, um, or just establish kind of with.
We'll talk with Trent.
Trent, what it looks like, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I had for talking points.
I said, I, if you want to talk about in August or, I mean, I think you're gonna have my one on one with, maybe we talked about, maybe he has some ideas about changing the board schedule and meeting dates and.
That was.
Oh, maybe in our discussion, that'll put you on the.
I have ideas on what.
I would like to entertain before the election. Some ideas on.
Ah, I see where this is going, yes.
Forward dates and work sessions and meeting times and.
Yeah.
Schedules.
The good thing about hiring someone new is there's, I come with different ways it could potentially be done.
Different use of ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we like, I know we've talked even some about, um, presentation lengths and how work sessions and meetings get really long and how do we give these up better and make it meaningful for us and not just kind of the same pre made slide deck that everyone is talking about. So we've had some ideas about that to shorten meetings, um, make it more digestible for us. But yeah, other ideas are always welcome to be discussed.
I understand it takes some trust and I gotta, I gotta, gotta get that, I gotta earn it from this group, but, um, I'm confident that we can get there. I think there's some things we could do to make our, our time together a little more efficient, that's what I talked about with Sean.
Yeah. Yeah. Are there, would it be like combining into once a month or?
Can you give us a little bit of like?
Yo, I mean, we talked about doing like, we still meet maybe twice a week, but something, do a Monday then a Wednesday and not.
Oh, like, so it's not always the same.
Not take two Wednesdays out every month or.
There's a lot of different ways.
Yeah, do a Monday night work session and then two weeks do a Wednesday night work meeting or.
That is true, the Wednesday, like Wednesdays gets hard, um, like every Wednesday.
Yeah.
Cause it, it actually, because we protect it from sports practice, we do a lot of big, like family dinners.
Yeah.
I'm like, I mean, they take care of my kids while I'm gone, but I don't see my, all my family as much as if we would have, be together on a Wednesday night.
I, I'd be happy to put together some ideas, my plan was, like, that would potentially year two, but if the board was willing to explore what that could potentially look like, I can put something together and share it and then you can make a decision on what you'd like. I know it's impactful for time and your schedules, but.
I think it would be helpful, just knowing that we have four seats up for those who have served four years that have felt maybe longer at times. Um, and anybody else who might be interested in serving to know what, what is it, what do you envision it looking like, the time commitment? You can't guarantee we're gonna have short meetings, cause we like to ask questions, but could it be different, could it be a different night of the week? That sort of thing, what your ideas are, nothing will be set in stone, just things for us to think about.
All established some different ideas?
Yeah, I'd be able to do it if ever.
Yeah.
Let's go.
For sure.
Anybody else?
You have a second talking point?
Yeah, I got one for the, uh, I guess, in the spirit of the election, I guess, um, we talked about this at the leadership meeting, um, having like open houses in the community just to kind of help educate the community about board work, what it takes to run and, um, you know, I think, uh, a few years back, I was part of one where we hosted open houses at, uh, 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 different buildings and one or two board member came with superintendent or, and Lori. And both Lories were there, kind of have pack, information packets available for community members who might think about running and come and ask questions and see what it takes and help draw up some interest in serving our kids, so.
Yeah, probably that came from the, in, the feeling that we're getting is that we might not have everyone running again, and so I haven't heard a lot of talk of in the community who is interested in running. And so we want to try to like let people know that they can run, so we're not in a position, I'm not having board seats filled.
Can I have my last little talking point?
Yeah.
Can we, since we're not doing one on ones anymore, can we get notes or what's the best way to communicate to the rest of the board what's discussed in board leadership meetings?
Yeah, I can.
Can we do like a, a work in Google document, cause I feel like there is some things discussed there that don't really make it to the table sometimes?
Sure.
Just synopsis or a recording or whatever, however you guys feel comfortable doing it, just so we're informed.
Yep.
On what's discussed in those meetings.
Yes, and that, probably this week I haven't sent one yet. I will make sure to send emails, we had a couple weeks we haven't met this summer too. Um, but happy to, we actually have a document that we could make available where we just, um, Lori started with Erin of topics to go over. Yeah, we could share that, like, this week was the superintendent evaluation. Establishing district goals, Erin, Erin added that cybersecurity training, legislative priorities, handbooks moving forward, so we'll have a moment for that. Um, meeting schedule, like we talked about, like shortening the presentations, election paperwork and facilities study. Um, so we can share that and then maybe if you peek at it in your.
I own time.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we used to do with the director reports, it just changes and it's just a document.
Um, and I do, the week that something that's really controversial might come up, like I already put on there for next week, I want to check back in on the athletic trainer contract. So if there's things that like I knew you guys had questions on, I try to remember to them, like email you guys out, like this came up at board leadership, here's the answer to the questions. But I would rather have you guys have eyes on it, so if I forget an email or don't do it, you can be like, Allison, you talked about this, what happened? That'd be helpful. Other talking point?
Move to adjournments.
All those in favor? Okay.
I was on, I needed to meet the seven o'clock time.